All right, we're going to start the meeting in about one minute. We're going to allow some people to sit down and then we'll start. Great. Welcome, everybody, to our December -- last meeting in December. It's great to see you here tonight. A majority of the board is present, therefore a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. Board Member Wester, please let the audience know of our interpretation services.
Si hay alguien que necesita escuchar la reunión en español, tenemos a un intérprete, levante la mano, y tienen dispositivos para que puedan usar. Gracias.
Thank you so much. Tonight's flag salute will be presented by the Rogers College High School Junior ROTC under the direction of Colonel Daryl Ping.
Color guard, post.
Color guard, Vice President. Harry, colors. Right face. Forward, march. March time, march. Colors, up. Left face. Reasoning, colors.
Would you please join us in the pledge? Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Hopes.
You may be seated.
Board Member Wester, would you please introduce tonight's cadets?
Absolutely. It is my privilege to thank Colonel Daryl Ping and the pledge leader was Brianna Adams, color guard Naomi Purnell, Francisco Andablo, Chase Davis, and Kaden Davis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, welcome, everybody, for being here tonight. We're on to Agenda Item A3, and I want to remind those wishing to address the board to sign up with the Board Clerk Cindy Hutchings, sitting here at the end of the board table to my right. As a reminder, there's a five-minute limit to those comments. Upon approval of the consent agenda, no additional speaker request will be accepted. So if you have one, please bring it up right now, basically. Moving on to A4. Before I consider a motion to adopt the agenda, Superintendent Gist, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are no changes tonight, Madam Vice President.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fait.
Aye.
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 Dr. Gist, do you have any special presentations tonight?
We absolutely do have a special presentation tonight, everyone. I know you can see them over here, ready to get started, but we have some really special guests coming to us tonight from Edison Preparatory School. So, under the direction of Director of Bands Doug Stires, we have the Edison Preparatory High School Advanced Jazz Ensemble. We also have our interim principal Clay Vineyard, who's here, providing support. And this ensemble is -- it's a very special group of musicians. They are -- they have to audition. These are some of the most talented musicians anywhere in the Edison program. They have to, you know, compete to be a part of this particular ensemble. It's a performance-based group, and they -- their goals are to advance students' understanding of music, music theory, performance, as well as to cultivate the importance of jazz and jazz education in our schools. And I heard a little bit about their most recent performance schedule, and it sounds very intense. So they're in very high demand, and we're very fortunate to have them here at the meeting tonight. So they would like to thank each of you on the Board of Education for the invitation, and they also want to make sure that you know that they have a concert coming up this Thursday, December 20th, at 7:00 PM in the Edison Preparatory High School Auditorium. And so you -- if you like what you hear, and I know you will, there's another opportunity to hear even more. So join me in welcoming Director Stires and all of the members of the Advanced Jazz Ensemble.
Anything else you all want to add before we move on? So concert Thursday night, I know you're going to get lots of takers after that performance.
Absolutely. We just want to say, thank you for having us out and performing, and just if you've got the time, come out Thursday night. That was "I Heard the Bells" on Christmas Day, and it featured Maxwell Yell on the trumpet. And again, thank you very much for having us out.
I want to -- I want to add just -- Mr. Stires, I want to add just a little bit, too. Since I represent Edison and my daughter goes to Edison, this is -- many of them are in her main group of friends, and so I know the amount of time that you're putting into this. We so appreciate it, and all your work shows. And to Mr. Stires, I mean, it's amazing what you are accomplishing with these kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We do have one other presentation that we're going to do tonight, but before we move on, it's always wonderful to look out and see the folks who come to be a part of these meetings. And we look out and see, you know, community leaders, members of Team Tulsa, just so many people who come to be a part, and those who are watching as well. I do want to just point out that someone very special to me is here tonight. My PE teacher from Nimitz Junior High School, Coach West, is here.[708.56][708.56](laughing) I think he came because my back is better, and he feels responsible, right? Because I'm strong, so I healed fast, right, Coach?[721.13][721.13](laughing) Something like that. Anyway, so we have one last presentation tonight, and this is a very serious and important one, and I want to thank Board Member Marshall for her leadership on this. And I believe you're going to do this presentation. This is a resolution of appreciation for Mrs. Vernetta Colbert, who -- and you're going to do that presentation, is that correct, Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm going to turn it over to Board Member Marshall for that presentation.
The family is not here with us this evening, but I will ensure to pass this on at the services on the 20th. Ms. Colbert has served well in our community and as a light throughout the years. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas the passing of Vernetta Colbert is an important moment for all of the Tulsa Public Schools' family to memorialize and honor the lasting impact that Ms. Colbert had on many thousands of Tulsa students and families. Whereas, as a child and young woman of color, Ms. Colbert was among the first students to integrate East Central Elementary School in 1955, and was a member of the first class to integrate the East Central High School in 1966. Whereas, Ms. Colbert graduated from East Central High School and went on to support her community through her work with Morton Health Center and Core Civic, and through her service as president of the first United District Ushers in the state of Oklahoma, and as president of the Ushers and Finance Committee, members of St. Peter's Baptist Church in Tulsa. Whereas, Ms. Colbert and her peers, no doubt, faced many challenges as they made history, paved the way for so many Tulsa children and families of color. Whereas, the lasting legacy of Ms. Colbert and her peers is a racially diverse school district wherein all students are celebrated, affirmed, and supported regardless of their skin color. Whereas, Tulsa Public Schools remains deeply committed to ensuring that every child in Tulsa has access to exceptional learning experiences in Tulsa -- lost my place, I'm getting older. Exceptional learning experiences in school communities that treasure diversity. Whereas, the Tulsa Board of Education extends condolences to the family and friends of Ms. Colbert and commends the life she lived, one of great love, deep faith, and service to her community. Be it resolved that the Tulsa Board of Education humbly expresses their greatest appreciation for Vernetta Colbert and reiterates their commitment to honoring her memory through its continued focus on understanding and confronting inequities and working to combat the systemic inequities and injustices that remain in our public education system. Adopted by the Board of Education of Independent School District Number One of Tulsa County, Oklahoma, in a regular meeting convened December 17, 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Second.
And I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 And, Ms. Marshall, I believe you're presenting that to the family at the --
At the service.
Service. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you to each of you, board members, and to you for your leadership, Board Member Marshall, on that. Really, a special recognition. And that concludes our special presentations tonight.
Thank you. That brings us to Item D, where we approve the minutes of the December 3, 2018, regular meeting of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Mr. Percival?
I was absent from that meeting, so I'll abstain on this vote.
Thank you. All right, and I'll call for the vote. Ms. Fait?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye. Aye. Moving to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments from board members? And I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to the action agenda, where we have one item. It's F1. It's a recommendation to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that includes the independent audit report of RSM US LLP for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. The rationale is that the Oklahoma law requires school districts to have an audit performed each year and accepted by the Board of Education. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is the reporting standard for government financial reporting. The audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. Dr. Gist, will there be an audit report tonight?
There will be, Madam Vice President. We have our auditor, who's here with us tonight, Mike Gibson of RSM, and he's going to present the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, Mr. Gibson. And we also have Madam Vice President from our team, our general accounting manager, Alicia Schrader, and our bond accountant, Molly Potts. And I want to thank both of them for spending even a little bit more time with me today on this, some last-minute questions, and of course, with the leadership of our Chief Financial Officer, Norberto Del Godillo. And so we're available, this team is available, to answer any questions board members might have. But we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, board members, and Superintendent Gist. I'm glad to be here, and our firm is really pleased to serve Tulsa Public Schools as your independent auditors. And I'd also like to thank Molly and Alicia, and also Janet, who just recently retired. I felt like our team and the district's team really worked well together. We had excellent communication throughout, and so when things popped up during an audit, as they always do, they would get resolved usually pretty quickly and pretty efficiently on everybody's part. So just a little bit of a background. So the audit actually starts back in June, and it starts with some, you know, some planning, finding out what's happened during the year, and then doing a lot of detailed testing, a lot of compliance testing. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also do a single audit of the district's federal programs. That audit's almost done. It's not quite completed, but it's not -- it can be issued separately from -- apart from this audit, and so we wanted to make sure this one got done first. And then we started the year-end fieldwork in October, and like I said, excellent communication. We had weekly status meetings with the team, just to discuss what was going on, plus just throughout the week. And then we, you know, completed our fieldwork, wrapped up the audit. About, I guess it was about 10 days ago, 11 days ago, I met with Board Members Decker and Ms. Webster, and also Norberto, to go over the drafts and kind of what, you know, what the status of everything. And then we issued our final reports last week. We had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning that we believe they are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also, because the audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, did tests of internal controls and tests of compliance with laws and regulations, and we were required to report any significant matters that we found. And I'm pleased to report that we didn't have any matters that we were required to report, either in internal controls or in over lack of compliance with laws and regulations. So I would be glad to answer any questions that the board members have, but that's the audit, and that's the results of the audit at a high level, so.
Any questions? Great. Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to approve Item F1.
Move.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All right, and I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 Aye. We are now to the information agenda, and I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to Superintendent Gist to present it.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Just as a reminder, both to our board, but especially for those joining the meeting, particularly if you're not usually with us, information items are presented for the board's consideration and for discussion, but they're not acted upon. If they do need an action, they'll come back before the board for either a future agenda, either on the consent agenda or on the action agenda. So Items G1 through G5 will be presented by our Deputy Superintendent, Paula Shannon. Ms. Shannon?
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Good evening, members of the board. Few items here. Item G1 and Item G2 are routine in nature. They're events to support -- venues to support events. One is a prom and one is a fundraiser. Item G3 and Item G5 are specific to G3 Booker T. Washington, G5 McClure Elementary, in support training for teachers and/or programming. There's no cost to the district on G3, and limited cost on G5. And finally, Item G4 is the renewal of a contract with the Together Group. They do a training called Align Your Time with Your Priorities. Our school leaders very much enjoyed the first part of that training in June, and there's been a request for more of that type of training based upon receptivity and effectiveness of it last June. Happy to answer any questions about those items.
We do before, if we do have board questions, I would like Mr. Huffheinz to come on up to speak to Agenda Items G2 and G3.
"I Heard the Bells on Christmas Day." It's good to be with you. Peace. Yes, peace. Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent, Dr. Gist, our Madam Vice President, Dr. Cindy Decker, and each of our honorable Tulsa Public School Board members and honorable staff and team. We are grateful for all the teachers and citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on this 17th day of December in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ, 2018. Yes, G2. Recommendation: Enter into a contract with the Greenwood Cultural Center, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide the venue for Nathan Hale High -- Nathan Hale High School Senior Prom on May 3, 2019. Cost not to exceed $1,485. Rationale: The senior prom is an annual event for the senior class at Nathan Hale High School that is attended by seniors and their guests to celebrate the end of senior year. Pretending to Nathan Hale, BoldHearts.com and other sites tell us the patriot, the man, Nathan Hale, was reared in a Christian home and knew a vast amount of scripture by heart. When his men became ill, he visited each of them and prayed for them. And may our teachers and students be encouraged to pray in the classrooms. It was said of Mr. Hale, "That man is a diamond, a Christian." May we celebrate the man, Nathan Hale, and also allow these seniors and their guests to celebrate the end of senior year. Yes to Agenda Item G2. The last night of Nathan Hale's life before his execution for obeying his commander-in-chief, he was desiring a Bible. He asked for a Bible, but the request was denied. Family, we may have persons in our schools who are in a dark night of their lives and are desiring the light of God's Word, the Bible. May we grant their heart's desire by putting one in their hands. G3. Recommendation: Enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Sustainable Tulsa S3-C program to incentivize Booker T. Washington High School to become involved in the Sustainable Tulsa program and to utilize this tool to measure progress for sustainable efforts no later than January 31, 2019. Booker T. Washington, in his autobiography, Up from Slavery, you may recall, said, "He made a special effort to teach the meaning of Christmas." Yes, like the great man, Booker T. Washington, may we make a special effort to teach the reality of the Christmas story in our classrooms. Yes to Agenda Item G3. Thank you, Madam Vice President, for your excellent leadership.
Okay, we'll move on to Item G6. This is a talent management item that recommends approval of the creation and/or deletion of positions within the district. Our Chief Learning and Talent Officer, Devin Fletcher, presented these. These are some grant positions. These are Strong Tomorrow's positions. They were shared with the Talent Management Committee at their meeting in November, and he explained that they are contingent upon approval of a federal grant, but we wanted to be fully prepared in the event that comes, that we're able to hit the ground running right when that is launched. And so our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Shannon, is available to answer any questions you might have about that item.
Dr. Gist, I would add really quickly that that federal grant was back at, I think it was the second board meeting in November, the board adopted or approved the acceptance, I believe is how we term it, of the grant from Youth Services of Tulsa. There's a federal grant they were receiving and then awarding us a grant based upon that. That's the grant funding that was in question, which we have now secured with that partner organization.
And that concludes the information portion of our meeting tonight, Madam Vice President.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Gist. Any final questions from board members on the information agenda? Moving on to staff reports. Superintendent Gist, do we have any staff reports this evening?
We do, thank you. So tonight, we wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to talk a little bit about the state report cards that are coming out. Now, most people are familiar with these in the past, but this has changed really significantly. And you may have seen in the news that there was a delay. Pardon my cough. And so we were, you know, there was a possibility that we were going to see that here before the holidays, but because of the delay, and these are very complex calculations, so it's, we certainly understand and appreciate the state's desire to get this right. But because we know that this is coming, we thought it would be helpful and wanted to take a moment to provide the board and the public with an update about the report cards that we're going to have coming out. So we have our Deputy Superintendent, who's here, as well as our Chief Data and Analytics Officer, Stephen Fedor, and they're going to give us this update on our state accountability systems and the upcoming report cards, which we expect to see early in the new year.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. I'll dive right in. Thank you, Dr. Gist. I'll dive right in. Goals of this presentation is, we want to share updates, as Superintendent Gist said, on this report card system and the timeline. We want to explain how the state report card aligns to internal TPS school performance framework measures. What's the difference between the state's accountability system and our school performance framework? And then, we want to provide an overview of the report card measures themselves, so that you understand the design of the system and to date what we know about it. So, I'm going to cover the first two pieces here, and Chief Fedor will cover the last part. It's the most exciting part. So, a timeline. How did we arrive at where we are today? In the spring of 2011, the original A to F school grading system was adopted into law, and A to F reports were issued in 2013 through 2016. By the time we landed in December of 2015, the Every Student Succeeds Act was passed federally, was signed into law, replacing No Child Left Behind. That then required different accountability systems and so forth. It gave the chance, the state the chance to make some changes. On June 2016, Oklahoma House Bill 3218 was signed, and that required the State Board of Education to address the ESA, or the Every Student Succeeds Act, accountability requirements. And as we rolled into December 2018, the new Oklahoma school report cards were originally planned to be released. As Dr. Gist explained, the state is still working to ensure that the system is really accurate and that implementation goes well, so there's a bit of a delay. That's the larger timeline. Meanwhile, in Tulsa Public Schools, we were looking at, how can we create a system that helps us set important school performance goals every year, that also allows us to use measures that we have access to on a regular basis to monitor week to week, month to month, and make changes as we go? The state assistant, the state assistant, the state system doesn't allow us to do that. So, in July of 2016, we launched Destination Excellence, and then by the fall of 2017, we rolled out our school performance framework and our goal-setting process aligned to that launched. If we had time, we could do a little pop quiz here, based upon those different slides we always show about how all of that works, but we'll let you off the hook this evening with that pop quiz. Spread some holiday cheer. So, how do these two things, like, work together? The state report cards, and their larger accountability system, is designed to provide district and school performance information to the public, to display a set of information about district and school quality, and to allocate, from the state level, additional state and/or federal resources to the highest need schools based upon that accountability and report card system. Doing that is incredibly complex, and it requires the state to pick measures that, one, they have access to, they can gather consistent information on across the 500-plus districts in the state of Oklahoma, and that they have a high level of, of like, validity and reliability in using. Here in Tulsa Public Schools, our performance framework expresses a clear, common definition of how we're defining excellence across TPS schools. It doesn't mean that we don't care about the things in the state system. We just want some things that we can use more regularly. It helps us with goal-setting and continuous improvement. And finally, it guides our decisions as a district and each school's decision around resource allocation and strategic decisions that are being made around what to focus on and when. The state's accountability goals are grounded in this idea that all students can grow and all schools can improve. So, that's what they anchored in when they redesigned their system. It was also very important that they were providing accessible, meaningful, and actionable information about public schools across the state. And they're working hard to integrate a cycle of continuous improvement for schools, kind of year to year, identify what's working and what may be improved. So, again, as Chief Fedor talks, you'll see that many, the larger goals of college and careerary, graduates, academic excellence, safe, supportive, and joyful cultures and climates are important in both systems. We have more measures that we use, and we use some assessment measures that we can implement multiple times across the year, so we have more actionable information. You can think of it as like a balanced assessment system. So, we spend a lot of time talking with our school leaders and teachers on this front, that there are summative assessments that are given year to year. It's like going to the doctor for a checkup, right? Like, you check your blood pressure, your pulse, your temperature. If those things are off, like, you want to, like, look a little deeper, right? But if those things are on track, like, it tells you things are pretty good. But you don't do that, like, every day, right? Like, that's the first thing a doctor checks. You don't need, like, a preventative checkup, like, every month. You go year to year. An interim assessment cycle allows us to look at things on a quarterly basis, while a formative measure is like a unit test that a teacher gives. So, we want to think about how our state accountability system is more like the summative assessment. It comes out yearly. It gives us a point-in-time look versus our system, our school performance framework, gives our school leaders, our teachers, more actionable information on a day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month, and quarter-to-quarter basis, so that we can make more real-time adjustments to the strategies and action plans that we've put in place. So, the state assessment system helps us see year to year, helps us understand progress over a longer period of time than our school performance framework measures are designed to do. It's kind of, in that spirit, thinking about, how can we use the state report card? What is it, what it, what is it not? It is an annual summary of our district's and our schools' performance across several statewide measures, and we'll go through what those are in here in a moment. It's a tool to support the district and school performance conversations with our community, and it's an attempt to capture multiple aspects of district and school health and improvement. What it's not is a duplication of the old A to F system. It's pretty different from that. It's not a comprehensive set of measures that encapsulates the full story of a student's experiences at our schools, and it's not a report with regularly updated information, like I explained before, for, designed for continuous improvement and adjustment during the school year. So, in upcoming months, the timeline shifted, so that instead of this becoming public in December, the state is continuing in January to develop online modules to provide to districts to help us better understand the measure calculations. And Stephen will get into this a bit in a moment. By late January, we believe that preliminary data and district review periods will open up, so we get to go in and understand how things are shaping up and validate the information. And then, after the district review period, so that would be probably some point in February, will be the submission of the report cards to the State Board of Education for approval and release. At that point, this would become much more public for our community, and we would have all of that information ready to share. As this is finalized and we know more moving into the new year, we'll be sure to keep you updated. With that, I'm going to hand off to Stephen to talk more about the actual measures.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, board members, for allowing us to come speak to this. The, as Paula mentioned, and I'll go back one slide really quickly, maybe? Yes. The modules come out in January, so as we have been working with the state, we do understand quite a bit about the system. However, there are some details that we still don't know yet. So, as I talk through this, some of it will sound a little ambiguous, because in some areas, it is still ambiguous as to some of the details. Hopefully, with these modules, we'll have much better understanding in January. Separating this out into elementary and middle school, as well as high school, because the measures are slightly different between the two. In elementary and middle school, there are a few main areas. Academic achievement, this is comprised of English Language Arts, Math, and Science assessments. That's a total of 35 points. Overall, looking at a total of 90 points that this will all, all add up to. Academic growth, for 30 points, split evenly between English Language Arts and Math, as well as English Language Proficiency Assessment and Chronic Absenteeism. So, those are the measures they'll be looking at. We'll dive into each of them in a second. High school looks pretty much the same with two big exceptions. One is graduation is included in high school. You'll also notice that there is no growth measure in high school. That is because now there's only one required state assessment within high school, so there's no way to measure growth at the high school level. The SAT is the assessment that is used in Tulsa for the state accountability measure in high school. So, what does all of this mean? The Oklahoma School Report Card is a multi-measure model of school improvement performance, so it's looking at multiple areas, as Paula alluded to. There's growth-centered measures. They require multiple years of data to show progress. And there are school quality indicators, such as chronic absenteeism and post-secondary opportunities, that provide supplemental information within the scorecard. Starting with the academic indicators. These demonstrate how students are performing on annual assessments, ELA, Math, and Science, and they're composed of two different items, and I'll go into the detail on each of these. One is attainment of student group targets, and the other is percent of students scoring proficient. We're really used to the percent of students scoring proficient. The attainment of student group targets is something new to Tulsa, new to Oklahoma, and requires a little bit of thinking to understand how it works. I'll go into it in a second. And then, there's the academic growth. This aims to celebrate students who are progressing on ELA and Math compared to their performance in the prior school year. A reminder, for those of you who are familiar with this, this will sound pretty familiar, but there are four ratings that you can get as a student within the state assessment: below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced. If you score 300 or above on the OPI, or Oklahoma Performance Index, that is a score of proficient. It's a 200 to 399 range. These are consistent across the grade levels. So, the OPI scale scored target, that 200 to 399 rating, is how these tiered subgroups come into play. What the tiered subgroup is, is you'll see on the left side here, identifies different subgroups. Students with disabilities, not including 504 plan, economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and race and ethnicity. And you'll see it has dipped by grade across the top. What this is showing is that there is a score that a student must achieve based on a demographic characteristic, and it's only one of those characteristics, starting at the top. So, for a student with disabilities in fourth grade, in order to score a point on this, this doesn't make them proficient, but for the state accountability framework, for them to score a point for their school, they must score a 266. For a student in fourth grade who is not a student with disabilities, is not economically disadvantaged, but is an English learner, they must score a 288. It only selects the rank order of a student characteristic. So, a student who is economically disadvantaged and Native American, it would only look at the economically disadvantaged area. So, this is something that is completely new to Oklahoma, new to Tulsa. We do understand these scores. We don't yet know, of the 15 points for achievement, how much of that is split between proficient versus scoring at this level? Paula, you on the way in there?
Just to put a fine point on it, like, proficient is proficient is proficient for that one part. So, it gets 300 across the board. And the reports that go home to parents with their child's performance on it, it's proficient at 300 regardless of what your demographics are.
That is correct.
It's just for this sub-portion that this applies.
That is correct.
In the state report card system.
Yes. And so, a parent won't receive a report that says, "This is the score and how it relates it." This is just for the state report card system. So, this is one of the newest areas for us, and one that we're still beginning to understand how it will play out. There is also the academic growth component. This, unlike other systems that we've seen across the nation, and some that have been implemented locally as well, you can score, you can receive points for growth, moving within bands or across bands. So, you might be on a low end of basic and move to the higher end of basic, and you can still receive points. Once again, we don't have the modules, so we can't, we don't know exactly what that will look like and how it will translate, but you do receive points for growing in a subject. English learners will be measured based on the English learner performance assessment. It reflects the percentage of English learners who are on track towards a timely exit from their language acquisition plan. It's based on the initial proficiency for that student, and they have up to five years to exit the program, but depending on where they came in at in their proficiency. And we use the most recent scores and expected exit year to understand if a student is demonstrating progress. So, once again, you can have up to five years to exit, depending on where you start, and we understand where you're at compared to what is expected on your exit date, to see if you're making adequate progress. And then, finally, in elementary and middle schools, there's chronic absenteeism. This one is the most simple and most straightforward to us. This, once again, is related to the extensive amount of research that indicates students who are chronically absent, missing 10% of school days or more, have a much more difficult time staying on pace with their peers who attend school on a regular basis. It's one of the reasons that we know it's so important for students to be in school as often as possible. This is, counts excused absences and unexcused absences. It reflects the percent of students who are in good attendance. So, it's actually the positive. So, the actual number rating is, and this one is the easiest, that we do know what it looks like. It's 10 points possible. If you have 80% of your students who are not chronically absent, so who have good attendance standing, you would get eight points in that. If you have 95%, you would receive 9.5 points. So, this is the one we know pretty well what it will look like and how that will play out. Graduation, once again, is a high school-only metric. You see, you've seen the graduation rates that we have brought to the board each year as we get them. The one major difference here is, if you look at the second bullet point, there will be additional points awarded for fifth and sixth-year graduates. So, it's giving credit to not only the students, but the schools, as they continue to support students to graduate within five or six years after that. It is still the hope and goal for all students to graduate within their four-year cohort, but it is great to see some additional credit given for those who are graduating with their fifth and sixth-year cohort. And then, finally, post-secondary opportunities. These opportunities include AP and IB coursework, internships, dual or concurrent enrollment, and programs leading to industry certification. The indicator reflects the percentage of students engaging in at least one of these opportunities. So, it's not just the availability for them to do it, but students actually engaging in it. Thank you. Happy to answer questions that you may have regarding this work.
Any other questions? Mr. Percival?
Gist, I'm looking at the page 19 here, and it, and where an improvement score were additional graduates who successfully had attained a diploma after five or six years. So, if a student goes through our Tulsa Learning Academy and receives the credits to obtain a diploma, where is the credit for that graduation applied? At which school?
Well, it applies to the student's school of record.
Yeah. So...
So, at TLA, Johnny Smith is in TLA. But Johnny Smith has a school of record that's a different school?
Well, that's where it gets a little bit more complicated, Mr. ...
Okay. Well, we can talk about it later.
No, it's, I mean, it has to do with the coding that is used in which, some of our alternative programs in the district. The state has sort of a strange way of counting that. Go ahead. It's a very, it's a very important question.
Very good question. And it is one of those pieces within the modules that we hope to get more clarity on. For instance, as you mentioned, I didn't graduate within my four-year cohort. I go to a new school, and so my, by my fifth year, I do graduate. Is my school that I was in getting the credit, or is... Is my school that I was in getting the credit, or is the school that I've now moved to in the fifth year? And they're applied as what are considered bonus points. It's not completely clear to us yet whether it's going to be that new school they are at, or the school they had come from, and/or is there going to be some change retroactively, which we don't anticipate as that comes about for the prior school that they were at. So still more for us to learn, but we hope in those January modules that we will have much better information from the state.
And then we also, though, have that situation where some of our alternative programs, their graduation goes back to the one category, so...
Yeah. That is correct. Most of our alternative schools report to a single alternative school within the district as opposed to being broken out. Correct.
An additional comment, I'm grateful that we have our local performance framework that we're working on, because the state has flip-flopped around over the years. I think this sounds wonderful, you'll see how it works, but just in your slide up there, since, what, 2015, we've changed, or 2012, we've changed two or three times at the state level, and I haven't really, over the course of time I've been involved with this work, found the states to be very useful, particularly other than bashing schools that are trying really hard over the head with a snapshot of something that has happened in the past and it hadn't really served to inform instruction. And so I'm really grateful that we have taken the initiative over the last few years locally to try to solve that in our own way, but thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Percival, very quickly, with the wonkiness of how our current alternative certification plan is approved by the state, the school of record that Dr. Gist was referring to is trace, and our programs like Tulsa Learning Academy, Phoenix Rising, so forth, report in a graduation measure to trace as a complete entity.
Thank you.
Ms. Wester?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a quick question, and maybe it's more of a scenario, you may or may not have an answer to it. I'm looking at the academic achievement scale score targets page, which would be 15. What if a student fits into numerous subgroups? So I have an Afro-Latino who's an English language learner, also economically disadvantaged, and has a disability.
Correct, yeah. So the, to our understanding as of right now, you are only in one category, and the category that you would be measured in is rank ordered in this specific order, right here. So it is hierarchical, and it is always in that exact order.
And can I have just another follow-up? So for the English learners, are we also, does that include first and second-year newcomers?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that's where it gets into the, the number five, so five years to show growth based upon entry level.
Okay.
And so we're still working out, once we get the module, how exactly all that plays out, but yes.
Good. Thank you.
More questions?
I'll ask one. I also appreciate seeing this presentation before we received the report card data. I feel like we're kind of, I'll better be able to interpret it when it comes. I just want to, for the public, again, remind everybody, in case it was missed, that this was not created by the district, what we just talked about. This was created by our state. And so our staff here at Tulsa Public are digesting it, just as us board members, and you are also the public. I also have questions about the scale score targets, or the student group targets that are on Slide 15. I'd never seen anything like this before, so I don't, you may not know the answer to this question, but are other states using a system like this in their Every Student Succeeds Act accountability systems, or is this new to Tulsa, to Oklahoma?
Yeah. This is something that is being increasingly used with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. Not familiar of another state that is doing it exactly how Oklahoma is, but the goal of being able to assign credit, if you will, to schools who serve student populations that are coming into school with lower proficiency ratings is one of the primary drivers that is resulting in a setup like this. Once again, not familiar with any state that is doing it exactly the same, but certainly states that have similar setups to recognize that success in different schools.
Thank you. And I would just also add that I know that Oklahoma was on a number of different collaboration teams and work groups and things like that, and that there was a tremendous amount of sharing back and forth with, with other states, so I would imagine that, that this, you know, is something that's shared. But I, I do want to also say that we are, there are aspects of this system that we are encouraged about, the fact that this system is going to account for growth in our schools, which is really, really important, because we know that our schools are responsible for what happens once they have the students within their care, and it matters tremendously to teachers and to school leaders that they get, you know, credit, so to speak, for helping students to make progress once they're there. And so it's just one example of, of something about the system that's going to be tremendously different than what we've seen in the past.
And one thing to add, Dr. Decker, to your question and statement, the state devised their plan, and they have to submit it to the federal government. So the Department of Education then had to approve Oklahoma's accountability system as part of the larger ESSA plan. So it's been through multiple rounds of review and feedback to become approved, so that it can then be implemented in the state.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you to board members for your questions, and this will not be the last opportunity we will have to engage. It's just the, the first formal opportunity, and we will be understanding more, as you heard, and certainly when we begin to engage with the exact data, we'll know more, and then we'll be able to report out to board members and to the public on those report cards once we have them. Thanks again. And that concludes our staff report tonight. Madam Vice President?
Great. We're to Agenda Item I. Are there any reports or concerns from members of the board?
I have some comments to make tonight. I am sharing tonight that I have made the difficult decision to resign from the school board in order to focus exclusively on a dream job opportunity for me at Tulsa Educare. Though I could continue my Tulsa Public Schools Board service due to my limited capacity, it's time for someone new to represent District 5. Following state law, the vacancy created by my resignation will be filled by the board appointing a new member, and Ms. Keller will share tonight on this application process. I'll save my thank-yous and some reflections on this experience for my last meeting, when I submit my resignation letter, but for now, I'll suffice it to say that I've loved serving on the Tulsa Public School Board. To anyone interested in this seat, please reach out to me, as I'd really like to share with you my experiences and answer any questions that you have. Ms. Keller?
Thank you, Dr. Decker, and thank you so much for your unbelievable service. You are leaving some very, very, very big shoes to fill, but we are looking forward to hearing from District 5 residents who are interested in serving out the rest of Dr. Decker, excuse me, Dr. Decker's term. So first up, qualified applicants must meet the following requirements. Applicants must be registered with the Tulsa County Election Board residing within the geographical boundaries of District 5 for at least six months prior to the date of the application for appointment. That means that you must live in the district and be registered in the district for at least six months. One or the other is not good enough. You have to be both. So you must also hold a minimum of a high school diploma or certificate of high school equivalency. As an applicant, you cannot be employed by Tulsa Public Schools or related within a second degree to any district employee or member of the board. That's mom, dad, husband, wife, so on. The appointment to District 5 seat will run through the end of Dr. Decker's term in 2020, in which case you will then have to apply, and it will be up for election. So where is District 5, you might be asking yourselves? School Board District 5 includes Elliott, Lanier, Mayo, and Wright Elementary Schools, as well as Edison Preparatory Middle and High School. School Board District 5 is bounded by the Arkansas River on the west side and extends as far east as Yale. The northern boundary is 11th Street, and the southern boundary lies just south of Interstate 44, so it is the yellow section on the map on the projection up there. How to apply? First of all, applications will be live tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. I have been told that it might even be 8:59, you guys. So be ready, at your computer, ready to click on those things. Applications must be submitted online via email to our Clerk of the Board, Ms. Cindy Hutchings, or hand-delivered to the Service Center here at 3027 South New Haven, no later than 4:30 p.m. on Friday, January the 11th. So it gives you all of your holiday break to fill out the application. Applicants may be invited to meet with one or more current board members of the Tulsa Board of Education. Applicants will also have the opportunity to make some brief comments during an upcoming board meeting. Board meetings, of course, take place at 6:30 p.m. and are held in the Selman Room at the Education Service Center. To find the application, and if you haven't been to our new revamped website, I would highly recommend it, first, you will go to tulsschools.org and click on the menu button in the top right-hand corner. Next, you will select About the District, then Board of Education, and scroll down, and then choose either the electronic application or the downloadable PDF. Ooh, I skipped a step, didn't I? I apologize. First, you'll click on District 5 Application Process in the Announcements section. Then you can choose if you want to do it electronically or via PDF, and there are your red circles for that. If you would like to learn more, either about District 5 or any of our board seats, please feel free to visit our website. To learn more about applicant qualifications and the process, you would go specifically to tulsschools.org/district5, and we all look forward to hearing and reading your applications.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. We are to Citizens Comments. Do we have any citizens' comments for the evening? No, we don't. Okay. We are to Superintendent's Reports. Dr. Gist, do you have a report for us tonight?
Well, I just wanted to briefly say, we won't be together again in a formal way until our students leave for winter break, so I did just want to say, first and foremost, be kind to teachers this week, support them, remind students that we're going to have an awesome week of teaching and learning this week, give them, give them a little hug, a boost, whatever you can do, because this is an exciting time of year, but it's also, you know, can be a very challenging time of year at the same time. So we're going to have a great week of teaching and learning. We want everyone to have a restful and a time of rejuvenation over the winter break, and look forward to welcoming everyone back for the new year. Our next Board of Education meeting will be January 7th. That's all I had.
Great. Thank you. And there are no non-routine items to be discussed this evening. Mr. Wade, is there any new business for Agenda Item M? There is not. We are to announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, January 7, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. in the Cheryl Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
And I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 Aye.